Good evening, everyone. The May 2022 Brookhaven Borough Council Workshop will now be called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Willard, would you give us a roll call, please?
Yes.
Mr. Heller.
Here.
Mrs. Fuchs.
Here.
Mrs. Heller.
Present.
Mayor Levesley's absent. Uh, Mr. Vasquez.
I am here.
What was that?
Here.
Oh, okay. Ms. Suicki.
Unless you want me to be absent.
Now, Mr. Pappas.
Here.
Mr. Gilroy is absent. Mr. Wills.
Here.
Mr. Catania.
Here.
Mr. Wellward's here. Mrs. Boyle.
Present.
Chief Montella is in a meeting, and Chief Weiss.
Here.
Uh, that concludes roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Willard. That opens the first public discussion session. If there's anyone who would like to speak for public discussion, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. Mr. Dykes has just walked in. Would you like to speak for public discussion?
He's carrying his ball.
He's not ready. He's not ready.
That's great for the recording. Thank you.
He is.
Wow.
It looks like no one for the first public discuss...
Basketball.
Caitlin, would you like to speak for the first public discussion session?
Yes, please.
You're just in time. I was about to close it.
I apologize for being a few minutes late.
We will wait just for you. No worries.
Please don't wait forever. So, my first pageant is...
Sure, absolutely. Thank you.
So, this is just a letter, and you'll find under the letter... Um, you can put a question after.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And then, under the letter, the timeline of...
Evening.
Good evening. Um, this is P. Pumps.
Thank you.
And then, the breakdown of our residence. Can I do a thing, please? The breakdown of residence, um, we are signature from... Caitlin Smith, 4509 Chandler Drive. So, this is just really just a letter, the timeline, um, the breakdown of the signatures, and then the physical signatures. We're requesting that next week at the council meeting, there's a vote.
Yep, it's two weeks.
Yeah, it's two weeks. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. No worries.
Yes, so, that's what we're requesting.
I spoke to your neighbor, I spoke to, uh, Ms. Non about it last week. I did, I did poll most of council. I still support it. My opinion hasn't changed.
Thank you.
I have it on the agenda for our exec session that will immediately follow this meeting also.
Perfect.
And, um, I'm gonna ask for a vote, too, at that meeting.
I appreciate it. Thank you. So, I will leave you, leave it at that, um...
And we have this to review during the exec session also.
Yeah. I won't waste any more of your time, that's...
Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us, Joe.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak for their first public discussion session? It's like, no, the first public discussion session is closed. Mr. Will, sir.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A copy of the solicitor's report is on file with the Borough Secretary's office in the event anyone would like to review it. A few brief items I would bring to council's attention this evening. One concerns a motion to approve a resolution establishing police guidelines authorizing an arrest without a warrant. By way of background, Chief Weiss has advised that as a condition of the Borough Police Department successfully navigating its accreditation process, the Borough is required to establish guidelines in authorizing and in rest without a warrant for certain specific summary offenses. Now, the Pennsylvania Crimes Code defines offenses, uh, basically in three different areas. One offenses are known as felonies. They are the most serious criminal offenses. And then, the secondary, uh, is what we call misdemeanors, which are mid-grade, uh, level type of crimes. And then, finally, the less serious crimes are defined as summary offenses. And so, pursuant to the chief's correspondence to council, I have drafted a resolution for Borough Council's consideration establishing those police guidelines authorizing an arrest without an, uh, without a warrant in accordance with Act 25 of 1995. Now, the chief has further advised that time is of the essence for the Borough to establish such guidelines. Traditionally, we would not adopt a resolution at the workshop meeting, but naturally would leave that to the normal, uh, first Monday Borough Council meeting. However, there are exigent circumstances that require council to act promptly on this matter so that this accreditation process is not being stymied. This particular resolution has been placed, uh, as an item on council's workshop agenda. It has been properly advertised on the Borough's website, and certainly, therefore, it is of council's pleasure. A motion would be in order to adopt that resolution. I'm gonna turn the resolution over to Councilwoman Heller and let her expand on the specifics of that particular resolution.
Allow me to interject with a question.
Yes.
And a point, if I'm not mistaken, this, uh, this brings no change to police procedures. There was just no record of the resolution ever having, ever having been previously adopted, correct?
That is correct.
So, we're just, we're playing catch-up. It was a simple mistake or, or a loss of the resolution passed. So, there is no change to police procedures.
So, the resolution is a resolution, "Resolution of the Borough of Brookhaven, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, establishing police guidelines authorizing arrests without a warrant in accordance with Act 25 of 1995." Whereas, on November 17th, 1996, the Governor of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania signed an act known as Act 25 of 1995. And whereas, Title 42 of Pennsylvania Consolidated Statutes was amended by adding Section 8902, authorizing an arrest without a warrant for certain specific summary offenses. And whereas, 42 PACSA Section 8902B provides that the governmental bodies shall promulgate guidelines to be followed by a police officer when making a warrantless arrest under 42 PACSA Section 8902. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved as follows. Section 1, prior to making an arrest under 42 PACSA 8902, any police officer shall ensure that, A, he, she has probable cause to believe that at least one of the following summary offenses is being committed. 1, 18PS 5502, disorderly conduct. Number 2, 18PS 5505, public drunkenness. Number 3, 18PS 5507, obstruction of highways and other public passages. 4, 18PS 6308, purchase, consumption, possession, or transportation of liquor, or malt, or brewed beverages. B, the suspect's conduct is ongoing. C, the conduct constituting the offense is in the officer's view. And D, the conduct imperils the personal security of any person or endangers public or private property. Section 2, following an arrest pursuant to 42 PACSA 8902, the officer shall forthwith satisfy the procedure set forth in Pennsylvania Rule of Criminal Procedure 71, procedure following arrest without warrant. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Borough Council of the Borough of Brookhaven hereby adopts the aforementioned guidelines to be followed by a police officer when making a warrantless arrest under 42 PACSA Section 8902, duly adopted this 23rd day of May 2022, the Borough of Brookhaven, signed by Council President Terry Heller, and tested by John J. Will, Willward Jr., Borough Secretary.
Who wants the motion?
So, move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries.
John, send that to me, it's on the website. Send that to me, it's on the website.
Second item on my agenda concerns a proposed ordinance amending the police pension plan. If you may recall, the Borough approved a new five-year collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, retroactive to January 1st of 2020. As part of our agreement with the FOP, the parties agreed to make certain amendments to the police pension fund. These two amendments included the following provisions. Number 1, that the pension documents would be amended to provide for an early retirement benefit in accordance with Act 24, codified as 53 Pennsylvania Statutes Annotated, Section 771. Now, prior to agreeing to such an amendment, the Borough did conduct a cost study analysis which determined that said provision shall have no appreciable cost to the police pension plan. And second, the ordinance would provide for a reduced police pension disability benefit. This bargain for change in disability benefits will result in an appreciable cost-benefit savings to the pension plan, and hence, the taxpayers of the Borough of Brookhaven. Now, the Borough's police pension consultant has advised that it would be prudent for the Borough to adopt an ordinance memorializing these changes in the Borough's police pension plan, so again, that it is consistent with the collective bargaining agreement, and furthermore, prevents the Borough from receiving a deficiency grade from the Pennsylvania Auditor General's Office when it conducts an audit of the Borough's police pension plan. Accordingly, we have drafted an ordinance for Borough Council's consideration. If it is the pleasure of council at the June 6th, 2022, meeting, then a motion would be in order to advertise said ordinance, again, with possible adoption to occur by motion and affirmative vote of Borough Council at the July 11th, 2022 council meeting. And then, finally, third on my agenda, I did wanted to discuss the present situation with Crozier Health. I have been involved over the past month with meetings with multiple officials of Crozier, of county officials, of local municipal officials. So, the public is fully aware. We are in a rather precarious situation regarding the delivery of medical services in Delaware County, particularly related to Crozier Health, the largest healthcare provider in the county. Services have been in a state of severe reduction through the Crozier Health system since the beginning of the year. As our residents may know, Crozier Health, through its parent company, Prospect Medical Holdings, is a for-profit corporation whose ultimate responsibility and loyalty is to its shareholders. Crozier Health is presently involved in an acquisition process with a nonprofit called Christianic Care Health Systems located in Delaware. It signed a letter of intent back in February of this year. However, that transaction is not anticipated to close until the end of the year. Since the beginning of the year, Crozier Health has made substantial service cuts and changes within its system. In January, the emergency department, pathology lab, and all medical imaging services were suspended at Springfield Hospital. A month later, in February, the inpatient hospice unit at Taylor Hospital in Ridley Park was closed. In March, Crozier announced the temporary closure of the intensive care unit and surgery unit at the 215 certified bed Delaware County Memorial Hospital in Upper Darby by May 31st, approximately one week away. In April, Crozier sent to Aston, Brookhaven, Glanolden, Prospect Park, Tinnicum, Norwood, Ridley Park, a letter that paramedic services through its advanced life support response vehicle, sometimes known as the chase car, would cease if a financial arrangement wasn't made. And also, last month, in response to these actions, Delaware County Council passed an emergency ordinance requiring additional notice for medical closure, for medical service closures and reductions. A day later, Crozier Health issued a letter that the substance abuse clinic at the Delaware County Memorial Hospital would close June 10th, and that the first steps inpatient substance abuse and addiction unit at Crozier Chester Medical Center would close on June 11th. In addition, the crisis center at Crozier Chester Medical Center would close, along with all mental health and substance abuse treatment services at the community campus in Chester, including school-based services, intake assessments, referral case management, and psychiatric rehabilitation, all set to close on June 19th. Last week, Delaware County Council filed a lawsuit with the Delaware County Courts seeking an injunction to prevent the Crozier Health Systems from terminating all these important behavioral health services provided by Crozier Health and Prospect. Again, the grounds for the injunction is that Crozier and Prospect has not complied with the provisions of the emergency ordinance approved by council on April the 20th of 2022, calling for submission to the Department of Health of a closure plan in accordance with the termination of the above referenced services. And so, the ordinance does in fact require a submission and approval of a closure plan at least 120 days in advance. Again, this is a health care crisis by any stretch of the imagination. There are a lot of moving pieces that are going on. There are a lot of negotiations, but nothing is certain at this point. Again, I was involved in an earlier, uh, meeting, a Zoom meeting earlier today with Council President. I believe Councilwoman Heller was also present at Zoom meeting, again, with Aston, some Aston Township officials, again, to discuss the ALS delivery service vehicle. And again, I continue to work with, uh, our Brookhaven Fire Department and our personnel regarding how we're going to accomplish to continue to provide an advanced life care, advanced life health services to the residents of Brookhaven Borough. And I will continue to update Borough Council as, and the public is the situation so warrants, but, uh, there is a doomsday scenario that quite frankly is being...
Yeah, yeah. This is becoming a Delaware County total issue. It's not just Brookhaven, so we really are going to, really, the ball is in Delco's court. They're getting the injunction. They have the resources to really pursue this. We, I don't think we need to be pursuing this and spending a lot of money because they're gonna be carrying the...
Well, who's got the feedback? Well, where we are, and I had this in my report, but Mr. Will stole all my thunder. He speaks much better than me, so that's a good thing. I urge the public to pay close attention to what myself, Mr. Will, says and my social media updates, and I'll have an update on social media by week's end after, that or after our next meeting with Aston. But if negotiations were to end today, as it stands, we would partner with Aston Township to, to provide ALS service, and it would cost Brookhaven taxpayers $150,000 a year. And that's a staggering amount for something that we're not used to paying for.
That's right.
That's where we stand right now. The thought is, the thought is that...
Oh, yeah, it is.
Everyone should be paying.
It is.
Why they picked on Brookhaven and Aston and the five municipalities along the Chester-Pike corridor is beyond me. The excuses are completely baseless, but, uh, again, that's if negotiations ended today. That's what it would cost us. And we have a pledge from Senator Kane and State Rep. Kruger to cover ALS, the cost of ALS coverage for the remainder of 2022. That's great, but it's not good enough for me, and I believe where Mrs. Sowicki was going was, I might be wrong, was I believe the county should step in and pay for ALS coverage for the entire county and bill us inner county taxes. It will, it'll spread out the cost.
That's exactly what I said a month ago.
Correct, correct. And we, and we've been saying it.
Oh, yeah.
I mentioned it to the county, they kind of...
You're gonna have to.
We're taking...
It's a county...
That's what, that's what, that's what we're trying...
It's not just us.
That's what we're trying to do, but to saddle Aston and Brookhaven with it, just speaking for this part of the county, is ridiculous.
It is ridiculous.
Is ridiculous. We met with Aston today, their township commissioner, or township manager, I should say, Bill DeFeo, their solicitor Beth Beck was on the call, the Aston Fire Chief was on the call, Commissioner, Nancy, help me out, Don. I'm, I'm in a moment. Boden, Nancy Boden, Nancy Boden. So, we all seem to agree that the county's gonna have to step in and help out, but we're doing everything that we can.
Now, how about the count, the municipalities that already pay for their own? Remember that was discussed?
I can't answer that question right now. And I...
There are still negotiations with Crozier. So, how it was, was that Crozier...
Oh, you mean that directly pays Crozier?
They're not, yeah, like Havert Town...
Parkside, Parkside does that, I believe.
There's a couple of them.
No, they don't.
So, what is, what does Parkside do again?
Well, we'll...
Parkside was on the call, we forgot that.
We'll leave that alone. So, when Jay, myself, and the Fire Chief, um, met with the CEO of Crozier a few weeks back, um, it seems that they're picking and choosing the municipalities that they're going after for the funding, um, for the ALS service. So, what had transpired from that meeting was that each one of those municipalities were working with them individually, meaning Crozier, to come up with a monthly cost and a yearly cost based off of cost per service.
But there's some towns that, that already provide their own, not through Crozier.
No, so that, they're not impacted. There was a...
There's very few.
There's only a couple of them.
Do you know, do you know the number, Charles?
The number for what?
Of, of the municipalities in Delco that provide their own ALS.
Like Havert, Havert Town.
It's a handful, correct? Three or four, I believe.
Yeah.
Probably about six, maybe.
I mean, out of, and we have 49 municipalities?
Right.
We have 49 municipalities, so it's almost not even worth bringing them into discussion at this point. We're worried about the, uh...
Oh, no.
Forty-four, forty-five that, that are getting hosed out of this. It's also worth noting that, much like many things in life, the municipalities that have their bleep together are the ones that are getting hosed. So, I'm not gonna name municipalities, but those with lower reimbursements, insurance reimbursement rates, they're not getting billed. You know, whereas, our reimbursement rate might be X percent, far higher than theirs. Doesn't make any sense, but we'll keep fighting. Pay, pay close attention to what we say on social media and up here. It's gonna be a bit before we have a resolution, but I'll hopefully have a more robust update in two weeks at the June council meeting. Anything else, sir?
Other than that, I can report general progress.
Mr. Catania, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple things tonight is, uh, the Charles Avenue Sanitary Sewer Project, that was a $406,000 grant. We received one bid, or $1,500,000, so we'll have a recommendation to reject that bid at the next meeting.
Say that again.
I said, $1,500,000.
That's it?
I, I trust I know what your recommendation's gonna be.
Correct.
I know what my recommendation's gonna be. It's nothing. It's ridiculous.
We're not gonna...
This is all because they're price gouging, and that's, that's my opinion.
We're gonna reject it.
This job, for the last 10 years, would have been $400,000. Now, all of a sudden, it's a million because they're gouging...
Going through the roof.
I tell you, it's ridiculous. And it has to be done. We had to figure out how to do it, Charles.
Well, we will certainly discuss it between now and then.
Secondly, the Edgemont Avenue, the sanitary sewer line, the new video inspection, we had a call with Vortex Services, who was a low bidder that was awarded the contract. They planned not to start that job until mid-July, and I already talked to the chief about providing, uh, I guess, some off-duty officers to, for traffic control, and they will reimburse the police department for that.
That's right.
And the only other thing I have, this is gonna take a little bit, not a whole lot, but a little bit, so, the Borough has a, they call it a NPDES permit. The government, you guys know this, the government likes to use a lot of acronyms. So, this NPDES permit, it's National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. So, the Borough has a permit for any of the stormwater that's discharged into the streams.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's a federal requirement that's administered by the state through DEP, and the permit cycles were five-year, five-year permits, and we're right now in the third permit cycle. We're actually a little bit behind on this, on this one, um, because that should expire in 2023, but due to whatever unknown reasons, that's been pushed back, so we have some time, but not a whole lot. So, anyway, the difference in the third permit cycle is that now we're required, the Borough is required, to develop a pollution reduction plan and to show a quantifiable reduction in pollutant load. So, pollutants that are going out in, in the stormwater runoff need to be controlled. So, they set a goal for that to be a 10% reduction and identify the target pollutant as sediment. So, the BRP, the pollution reduction plan has been developed, uh, a draft plan has been developed, it's been advertised in the Daily Times. A 30-day public comment period is, is open right now for any Borough resident who has any comments on the, on the program or the pollution reduction plan, and that's set to expire on June 22nd. After the, uh, comment period expires, council will have to take action on approving the pollution reduction plan. That'll get submitted to DEP, and probably within 90 days, we'll get a perm, we'll get our permit.
What are your options? What are the options to reduce siltation outside of rain gardens?
Well, perfect segue. So, I'm gonna throw you some numbers out before we get to that. So, DEP provided a protocol on how to figure out what the pollutant load was coming from Brookhaven, and they said, like I said, it was a 10% reduction. So, then they divided it into Chester Creek and Ridley Creek by, by the watersheds that we have. Based upon the, the numbers, there is 413,583 pounds of, per year of sediment that's generated here, and it goes to Chester Creek, and 318,699 pounds per year that's going to Ridley Creek, which 10% is like 41,000 pounds per year, gotta remove from Chester Creek, and 31,000 or 32,000 pounds per year from Ridley Creek. So, the options we have is stream bank stabilization, or if we can identify any streams in the Borough that, um, have erosion problems, document those erosion problems and do stream...
Is that a buffer zone?
They can react to it.
I'm sorry. Is, is that planting foliage along the creek?
It is. They call it a floodplain reconnect, so you basically have to, you take your stream, you build like a floodplain shelf...
Sure.
And then you, then you vegetate it exactly like you suggest.
You take away all the fishing spots.
Exactly.
Oh, you do?
Right. We would, we would not, I, just as a Borough, we would not, like, we wouldn't hit, like, Ridley Creek or Chester Creek. We would talk about the small tributaries that, that go to town.
I see.
Um, and infiltration facilities, like you said, that, that's, that's a higher, um, effectiveness rating, and then rain gardens, buyer retention. Street sweeping is another option that's out there that can reduce...
Don't even start, John.
How many years have I said this?
Meeting is adjourned.
We should have done it five years ago, I wonder.
Anyway, that, that pollution reduction plan will be available for any, any, uh, for public review, and any comment should be submitted to the Borough Secretary by June 22nd.
We could, I would be in support of renting a street sweeper periodically, correct? Would that not...
Unfortunately, in order to qualify for street sweeping, the criteria is pretty stringent in that you have to sweep all your streets, I wanna say it's like at least 20 times a year.
Oh, my gosh.
And, so it's bas, it's basically you're sweeping every week. And, uh, the machine has to be used, has to, has to meet a certain criteria. It can't be like the old, I call them the old Pelican ones, and the big, ones with the big brush on front, can't be that, has to be, has to be regenerative vacuum machine or something like that. So, it's, it's out there. What, here's what I suggest, is the, the options are presented in the plan, and actually, when we developed the plan, say our, our target was 32,000 pounds, we're gonna put projects in the plan that's gonna, gonna exceed that. What happens is, is you can pick and choose. So, when it comes time to doing these things, we can look at the costs of stream bank restoration versus the benefit we're gonna get for pounds removed, or an infiltration bet, or buying a street sweeper, or, or, or having a street sweeping, uh, service to enforce. We can look and see what, what's gonna be the, the most cost-effective.
Yeah, the street sweeper costs a quarter million dollars, doesn't it?
It was $35,000 for seven years. It was thirty-five thousand dollars for seven years. It's, that's doable. We're not paying two, three.
But you have to pay a full-time public works employee to run it.
I know. We have.
That's eighty thousand dollars per year.
We're gonna be designated as that person.
You can't, they, we're already stretched thin as it is, so you would pay them eighty thousand dollars a year to run the, you have to hire someone just to run the street sweeper.
What's the penalty? Tell them what the penalty is when we don't do, when we don't comply.
We don't know yet.
I'll bet you the penalty's cheaper than actually.
Yes, we do.
Is there a timeline of once this plan is?
Yeah, well, this is the only interesting part about it. I guess the permit, technically, the third permit cycle expires in two thousand and twenty-three. Now, here we are in middle of two thousand and twenty-two, and we haven't even started yet. Every permit that's been issued so far has a five-year life on it. I don't know what's gonna happen, that's coming from the state. I do not know what's gonna happen when the federal government steps in and says, well, wait a minute, you're supposed to be done in two thousand and twenty-three, but even though our permit from the state's gonna say we have five years from the approval date.
I would support a street sweeper if everyone understands that they cost a quarter of a million dollars. Hector's a mechanic, he could probably tell you how much they cost to maintain, and then you have to pay a public works employee probably fifty-some thousand dollars plus benefits and all that to, to operate a thing full-time. So you're looking at a tremendous cost. So way too, or the Borough Secretary can do it? Hire me, I'll do it.
Just put a computer inside of it.
It's a full-time job.
There you go. AI. All right, sorry, Charles, you got it?
That's all right. I guess the, the only final thing I wanna speak of that is, on some of the other towns that we work for, they've actually started implementing, and they're, just be very aware that this is not a cheap program. This is going to be significant cost of the boroughs to expand, and not only unfundamental needs come down from the government.
Yeah, they beat the heck out of municipalities, okay?
That's all. Thanks.
I just got one, one thing for you, Charles. Do you have anything for the Shepherd Street water main update?
I'm gonna ask you in a minute.
Not really, only that, the project.
We got, we got a PA one call for.
Right, exactly. That's all I have. I know, I know they, they applied for a street sweeping permit. I know it's, it's supposed to start shortly. Also know there's a gas main project coming up on Greenwood and Demille, I believe, so that neighborhood will be a little bit torn up for.
Well, they marked Shepherd. Shepherd has been marked, so I don't know what that means in the process, but I know that there's lines.
Shepherd's been worked on every summer since I moved here.
Yeah, but they were out, it was in the last two.
I'll get an answer.
I know my mom's.
Okay, thank you. Charles, are there, are there any grants for street sweepers? Or any, or anything, really?
The person that would know that would be the street sweeper guy, because he's trying to sell it so he'll have a.
Janice has him on speed dial, so she could probably.
No, I don't, but I know.
About the other portions of those.
The other portions, there's, there's grant programs out there, the Water Restoration Protection Program from the state, there's, they're out there. Everybody's applying for them.
Mr. Catania, thank you. Please have good news for the June, I will. Council meeting. The mayor is ill. Brings it to me. I already covered the brunt of my report, speaking of the ALS service. I just wanna thank everyone, particularly the volunteers and the rec board, Lois and Lynn, Mr. Dykes in the back.
Pat.
Mrs. Heller, Pat.
Jim.
And Jim LaPera and everyone else that helped put together a great car show, really last minute on, on Saturday. We raised two thousand dollars, which, as y'all know, will be donated to the humanitarian effort in the Ukraine. The next show is September the tenth, the next car show that will benefit the Banner Program that is. After this one-time donation, the future donations will return back to the Banner Program. Thank you all that showed up. Thank you all that made the show possible. It was, it was a good time. I'll have a full report, hopefully more updates on the ALS service at the June council meeting. Thank you. Mrs. Heller.
I'm not a taxi.
Oh, my bad. Oh, Mr. Gouler is absent, Mr. Vaskis. I saw Mr. Heller, right, Mrs. Vaskis.
Glad you can read. I'll have a full report for the council meeting.
I see.
Thank you.
Ms. Sowicki?
Yes, I have no report tonight, but I will have a full report at the June meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Sowicki. Mrs. Fuchs.
So the ordinance committee met last Thursday to discuss the responsible contractor ordinance, or the RCO. We will have numerous meetings, one each month to, again, talk about this, a lot of information. We're gonna pull apart the ordinance and see if we can come up with something. Mr. Glenn Hold, who is here tonight, is my right-hand man in the ordinance committee. He is the code enforcement officer for Marple Township and very knowledgeable on this subject, so I'm gonna rely on him for his expertise, so thank you, Glenn. Appreciate it.
Very, very good.
The Family Day Committee will meet this Thursday at six PM, right before the rec board meets at seven this Thursday. I wanted to remind everyone, on Tuesdays and Thursdays beginning the twenty-fourth, we will have volleyball in the gym from seven to nine for ten weeks. The cost is fifty dollars, and due to high demand, we now only have a few spots left on Thursday evening, so Tuesday is now full. Volleyball will only be made available to Brookhaven Borough residents because of how popular it is and because we only have one court. Last Thursday, we had our first yoga class outside by the walking trail. This will continue for another nine weeks, and we have decided to open up the yoga to any adult within the Pendelco School District. We will have registration outback at six PM on Thursday for those who would like to sign up for yoga, and you will also have to sign up a waiver, and that's when you would pay at that time. If you sign up this week, the cost will be forty-five dollars instead of fifty because we did have class last week. The yoga runs on Thursday evenings from six-thirty to seven-thirty through July twenty-first, and proceeds from volleyball and yoga will go to our Brookhaven Recreation Board. May twenty-first was our hometown Heroes Car Show at Coburn Elementary, and it was no surprise that the event was another successful car show. So thanks to everyone involved with that. I think everyone had a great time, and the cars were just fabulous. I already picked up my next car that I wanna buy based off that car show. May twenty-second was the Artful Aging Paint Class that was held at Borough Hall. There were about twelve residents who came and painted their terracotta pots. Thank you to Aurora, Megan, and Laney for hosting that. June fifth is our flea market, which will be held in the gym, in our gym, from nine AM until three PM, with setup beginning at eight AM. Twenty dollars reserved your table, and please visit our office to sign up during normal business hours, which are nine AM until four PM. We will, I believe, have an evening sign up for that. I don't know if we know exactly when yet, but there will be evening signups for, for the flea market. June eighteenth is our first two thousand and twenty-two concert in the park at Eaton Park. There'll be more information to follow on that. July seventeenth is the second annual Show for Hope Car Show at Coburn Elementary from ten AM until two PM. This car show raises money for the Hope for Halle Foundation, food and beverages, fifty-fifty, door prizes, music, and of course, classic and stylish cars will be on display. The Hope for Halle organization's mission is creating a better tomorrow through mental health awareness and increasing access to care for children and adolescents for connection and community, and community. July twentieth will be another concert in the park at Eaton Park, and again, more information to follow. And I just wanted to let everyone know that I have been trying to get a chip and vaccination clinic here in the borough. It's been difficult. I haven't been able to secure a date yet. The only date that they gave me was Sunday, and we've never had one on a Sunday. So I declined that, and I'll continue to get a date for us, so I'll keep everyone posted on that. That's all my report.
I just wanna make a comment about Family Day. I did make a, a statement last year when the first meeting was. I tried to explain that in the budget, there's fifteen thousand dollars for food, which pays for Leah's catering. That is all the borough pays. All of your rides and activities are paid and paid by the donations, so I think we need to actively try to get people, like, people like the two gentlemen that are here, and anybody else in the business community would like to help contribute. Thanks balance costs a lot of money, and it's not in the budget, people. And I'm just reminding Council, because I did tell the rec board last year, because Lynn and, and Mr. Tom were there when I made my, my speech to them, and we really didn't comply. I don't have any money to pay for this. We never do. Borough pays for food only. The volunteers have to contribute, and the businesses will donate to come and, and they give a lot of stuff. So I'm, I'm trying not to be the Scrooge here, but this, all the things we're talking about tonight, there's a lot.
When do the letters go out? When do the donor letters?
Yeah, the donors' letters are going out in what?
It should have been out a long time ago.
In two weeks? Okay, that'll give us a good idea.
Guys, people need time to give you like a decent chunk of money, you know, like fifty bucks. I'm just telling you, I mean, what you have, that's what Betty is gonna get, only that amount. I've said it last year, I'm saying it again, and I just want you to know, if you get a thousand dollars in, you're getting a thousand dollars in rides, and I'm not being the Scrooge. I have to really watch this budget, because we've got a lot of bills coming in that are really gonna hit us. And that bill for Charles Avenue was just, it just knocked my socks off, because that's outrageous. That is absolute price gouging, in my opinion.
Well, it's something we're gonna have to examine.
I know, we are, but that's outrageous. We knew up, up to two years ago, it was gonna be five hundred thousand. Now, all of a sudden, it's a million, because it's two years later?
Yeah.
That's price gouging.
Oh, I, we, we all agree.
And I really don't appreciate it, and the borough can't afford price gouging.
Well, we'll get into it.
But just try to contact everybody who could maybe donate something, because we really do. Because that is what the price of, I mean, last year, Leah's went up, and that's what the price is for this year, so.
Well, everything is up this year.
I know, but that's her price for this year, so, thank you. I hate to put a damper on it, but that is my responsibility.
No, no worries. We appreciate it. Mrs. Heller?
Sure. So I just wanted to echo what everybody said about the car show. It was a great day, a little bit too hot, but loved it anyway. I wanted to thank Sean McKenna, because he really stepped up his game in getting it all done within the last three weeks. I wanted to shout out to the DJ, DJ TZ, she was awesome. And again, all the volunteers, because we wouldn't have that show without all the volunteers that stepped up in the last few minutes, including Charles Allen and Jim LaPera as well. The police committee met on May the eleventh. We did a interview for a part-timer. Just wanna remind everyone, but the fire department has their open house on Saturday, June fourth, from twelve to four. It is a ticketed event, it's free. Tickets are at the firehouse and at the borough, so come on up and get your tickets, it's gonna be a great time. Just a reminder that this weekend coming up is Memorial Day. We also have our Memorial Day service on Saturday, the twenty-eighth, at ten AM in the gym, so please come out to remember those who gave their ultimate sacrifice for all of our wonderful freedoms. With that being said, I do hope that everyone has a great Memorial Day, but reminder that we do have an ordinances against fireworks. Please be mindful of our four, you know, legged furry little creatures that doesn't like the, the sounds, as well as those that have post-traumatic stress disorder. Fire pits are supposed to be covered, so, and also, if you're going to be out having a good old time, make sure you phone a friend or call Uber to get around. Let's make it safe, let's make it fun. And that is, I will have more for my report at the June meeting.
Can I just say real quick, Sherry, thank you for bringing up the fireworks. If anyone is unsure what our ordinance says, we have Ecode on our website, please go to Ecode, you can just type in fireworks, it comes up and read what our ordinance says. It's very important that everybody understands it.
Mr. Pappas, sir?
I have no report at this time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Leslie?
All right. Speaking of the fireworks, leave the fireworks to the professionals.
I agree.
They're starting construction at Coco's today. They were there last week, pumped out some water in the basement, and I believe Wednesday, I know Wednesday's a pre-job meeting over there in the morning, so Coco's construction is underway, and they'll have an extensive report at the council meeting in June.
Any idea what's going in at Coco's?
Coco's.
Oh, okay.
Really?
Good to hear.
Yeah.
Just wondering. Mr. Chief Ice, do you have anything, sir? All right. Brings up the second public discussion session. If there's anyone that would like to speak for public discussion, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Name, address, for the record. Tom Dykes, three oh five West Brookhaven Road.